The mayor's going to join us at some point, but until then we'll get started. So first of all, on the agenda, we have a presentation of the I-35 Express project update by Heather Christman and Walsh.
Actually, the presentation is going to be Kimberly Sims.
Yeah.
And she's representing Walsh and Walsh is representing AGL and the state of Texas in this regard, correct?
Yes. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us to come speak with you. My name is Kimberly Sims. I'm the Public Information Manager of the I-35 Express Project. Here with me this evening is Alex Southern. He's my partner in crime on the project and helps me out with the public involvement piece of this project. Tonight, I just want to give you a little overview of the project, tell you about our outreach and communications plan, and then take any questions that you may have. I'm 35 Express is a design built project which is being managed by AGL Constructors. AGL is a joint venture between Archer Western Granite and Lane Construction. We are also joined by Parsons and HDR as mine partners on the project. Well, we all know 35. We all know it needs more room. We all know that we're growing, so that is the main purpose of this particular project. And we're also going to be establishing a revenue source for future improvements. As you know, there's a Phase One and Phase Two of this project. If we were to build the whole entire project in both phases, it would cost us about 4.8 billion. This first portion of the project costs about 1.4 billion. Once we identify funds for the second phase, then TechStop will begin to build that portion as well. We can't do this alone. We run through two counties and eight cities. We work very closely together. We have, James is our new favorite person. He has rolled out the red carpet for us and just welcomed us and anything that he can do to help, he's been available to do that. Of course, we partner with the North Central Texas Council of Governments, DART, DCTA, NTTA, and the Texas Department of Transportation. And this project is about 28 miles long. We'll be adding general purpose lanes, managed lanes, as well as frontage roads between 380 and Denton and 635 in Dallas. I mentioned the cost to you earlier. We expect to be complete with this project by early 2017. We're hoping to start construction next Monday. So I'm really excited about that. Managed lanes are just basically toll lanes with variable pricing. They'll go one way in the morning, there'll be two lanes going one way during morning traffic, traffic, excuse me, during morning tr- I can't get it out, during morning rush hour and a different way during the evening rush hour. The lanes are separated by barriers and there'll be seven different access points on both the north and the southbound sides. What's next? We received our notice to proceed in late September, which signals the start of construction. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to start construction on next Monday if everything goes as planned. Next slide. And we did have our groundbreaking on last Thursday. Great event. These are our four commissioners in Denton County. And so I think we had about, gosh, at least 200 people there last Thursday at Coquettius Ranch Park. So really nice event. The weather held out for us. Next slide, please. I'm going to go from south to north. I know you all will be more interested in the middle part of the project, but again, we divided the project up into three segments, north, middle, and south. The south will flow from President George Bush Turnpike all the way down to 635. Next slide. In this particular area, what you'll see mainly is the addition of the managed lanes. Right now, we have the HOV lanes, so we'll be turning those over into managed toll lanes once construction is completed. We're hoping to convert the HOV, we're hoping to shut down the HOV lanes late October, early November. We'll start from Whitlock and go south down to 635 for that first point part. We'll also be widening the bridges at Whitlock, Crosby, Valley Parkway, and Valley Lane to make additional room for the managed lanes. We'll have a new interchange at Dickerson Parkway. We'll bring Dickerson over. And then, of course, the new interchange at Beltline Road, and of course drainage improvements and utility locations. Next slide. And again, the early work will include all the early bridge packages that I mentioned before, closure of the HOV lanes, and then work on Beltline Road begins in November. This is a rendering of what the Beltline interchange will look like. This will be Beltline right here. So we're raising Beltline up to the current elevation of I-35. This is I-35 right here, and that'll be elevated about 20 to 25 feet above its current elevation. So as you can see, there's room for parking underneath here for this downtown area, so we should start work there around November. Middle segment, which is the segment that is near the heart, goes from FM 2181 to President George Bush Turnpike. In this particular area, we're adding the managed lanes. Right now, we don't have anything here, so we'll add the managed lanes. The general purpose lanes in some areas will go from three to four. This is mainly between San River and Tollway and then Swisher Row where we'll add the fourth lane. Next slide. Also, across Lake Lewisville, we'll have a new southbound bridge across Lake Lewisville. I think this is my favorite part of this project because I'm really fascinated with the building of bridges over water because some things you can't drain. You can't drain the Gulf to build a river. You can't drain Lake Lewisville because it's a reservoir. So it'd be very interesting to see how this will be built. We're thinking about putting a time lapse camera in this area so we can monitor the building of this project. We'll also have pedestrian paths, shared lanes between bicycles and pedestrians. And then, of course, we'll finally have some frontage roads across that bridge to make it a little bit safer for commuters. Next slide. Again, additional of general purpose lane drainage improvements. We'll also be adding access to the north side of the I-35 State Highway 121 interchange. Right now, there's access on the south side, but nothing on the northbound side, so that's coming up next. It'll be easier for commuters to get around around this original hall. Next slide. And we'll also be making improvements to Coquettius Ranch Park. We closed the park early in September. It will be closed through the duration of the project, but once it reopens, we'll have new trails on the east side, new park roads, parking lots, a walk bridge on the west side. We're also redoing the bridges at Garden Ridge Boulevard and Fox Avenue and the new FM 407 interchange. Next slide. I know you all have seen this rendering before, but this is kind of what Garden Ridge will look like. You see the managed lanes, the additional lanes right here, and the expanded bridge. Next slide. Also in this area, we will be extending Turberville to where now it will touch the north and the southbound of I-35 front lanes, and we'll get a new interchange at Country Lane. Next slide. Of course, we've closed the park. When we start work on next Monday, FM 407, that'll be one of the first places that we'll start. We'll start working on the southbound frontage road. At one point, we will need to close the bridge down to actually work on the structure, so that should be more summer of 2015. So we've got a little while before we actually impact traffic across that bridge. The north segment goes from US 380 to FM 121. Next slide. Here, we'll be adding an additional lane of traffic. So as you see, as things narrow, you go across the bridge. It won't narrow down to two anymore. It'll go down to three to loosen up the traffic in that particular area. Next slide. We'll get new bridges at Corinth Parkway and Post Oak. Corinth will go over 35. We'll be rehabbing and expanding the bridges at North Texas Boulevard, Mayhill, Loop 288, US 77 in McCormick and Bonny Bray. For a lot of our bridge construction, instead of shutting down bridges, we are reducing lanes and shifting traffic over so that we can maintain the traffic patterns and not impact traffic so much. We've also been meeting with a lot of the cities and working with them on our traffic control plans to make sure that, you know, what we sit down and put down on paper is actually going to work and that we have not missed anything. Next slide. Again, early work in this area includes work at Bonny Bray and then drainage and coal work near US 77 in Pennsylvania. So you'll see in that particular area, some frontage road lane reductions near US 77 in that particular area. Again, we continue to acquire right of way, still doing some early design, and of course, again, we'll begin construction next Monday. Tell you a little bit about our outreach and communications plan. We do have a website. It's a partial website. We expect to have this fully functional with a lot of interactive goodies hopefully by mid to late October, but it's 35express.org. We'll have a new e-newsletter that you can go online now and sign up for. You can sign up now for text alerts. We're so pleased. We got 100 new likes on Facebook over the weekend. We think that the groundbreaking had a lot to do with that. Twitter, we do have a project hotline number, 214-483-7777. A live person answers that phone every day from 8:00 to 5:00. If there is an after-hours emergency, my cellphone number is on that recording, so if somebody needs anything, they can reach me that way. And then our project email address is info@35express.org. We try to return all calls and emails within one business day. Sometimes it's immediate. Sometimes if there, we need to go investigate and get more information, it may take 24 hours to get a response there, but we try to get them as soon as we, as soon as we get them in. Next slide. We have former external communications task force. We have PIOs from every city along the corridor and as well as the two counties and the transportation agencies. We meet monthly, and at these meetings, we're talking about what's coming up construction-wise, how we can get that word out, if there are things that we can collaborate on communication-wise, we're working on that to get those things done. We'll have our first round of community meetings in mid-October. We'll have one for the middle, one for the south, and one for the north. The MCL Grand Theater has graciously offered to host our midsection meeting, so that will be coming up. We'll be sending information out and making sure that James has everything to plug into all of your communication outlets. Then finally, we'll also have business owner task force meetings. These groups will meet quarterly, and just like we have specific meetings for each section, we'll do this the same way for the business task force. We know that we're going to impact some businesses, but we want to do whatever we can to help. For instance, if, you know, if we have to impact the driveway or anything like that, we'll have a link on the website to that business that they can drive their customers to to see the best way to get to their business. Next slide. We are located in Lewisville. We do have a PIO office. We're right between the Toys 'R' Us and the cons, right next door to the Halloween shops, and we have a lot of fun over there. But we're at 2420 South Simmons, Suite A in Lewisville. Again, this office is open from 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, Saturday by appointment. There we have, we're getting, we're getting everything up and running and decorated, so we've got a few renderings, maps. We should have an animation sometime in 2014, but as we get renderings done, we'll be putting those up and putting those on the website so people can actually see what the project will look like. Next slide. That's all I have, but again, here's our contact information, our website. Kimberly Sims is my email and phone number, and then Alex, there's his email and phone number. Any questions?
Really, the right-of-way acquisition is actually being performed by AGL, correct?
Yes, for Phase One. TechStop is handling Phase Two.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the second, the southern part and northern part, which is going to start first?
Everything will start, we will have work starting all over the corridor. So if you're in the north, you've got the drainage work up near US 77 in Pennsylvania. South, you've got the early bridge work.
Okay. The $1.4 billion contract, and this may be for staff here too, the $1.4 billion that has been set aside right now for this project, is mainly the bridge over the lake and stuff in the middle plus pieces here and pieces there. When the next part of the money is needed, is there another bid on this, or is this going to be AGL?
There would be another procurement process. I don't think there, the AGL contract, I may be wrong.
Right. We are only contracted to do Phase One.
Plus the piece here and a piece there in the northern and the southern part?
Well, they're doing work throughout the corridor, as you just described. So the expansion of lanes as part of Phase Two would be a separate procurement process with a different contract.
Okay. So we're still on the 1.4 out of the 4.8, so there's $3.4 billion out there to be, to be done. Okay.
And I believe TechStop is hoping that some of the funds generated by use of the managed lanes will help pay for some of Phase Two.
Any other questions? Ms. Sims, I want to thank you and Mr. Southern for the presentation.
You're so welcome.
Nice job.
Thank you. And I left my cards for everybody. Don't hesitate to call if you have a question or concern. Our cellphone numbers are on those cards, so don't, don't feel bad about calling on the cellphone if you need something immediately.
Thank you very much. Well, the mayor is here now, and I'll turn the meeting over to him.
Okay, well, good. Continuing with the next page. Thank you for coming to here today, Mr. ...
No problem. And we just, that's, we're on item B.
Thank you, sir.
The second item we have, and I shall bring it up in a second, is the, is a review of a series of issues and concepts related to a possible wind energy amendment to our existing ordinances, and this actually comes out of the February 2012 retreat. There was a kind of a little item attached to several issues that we were talking about with respect to the zoning ordinance and specific use zoning, and there was an element of green ordinance discussion that occurred at that point in time, and part of the council direction was, well, let's go ahead and take a look at the veins or wind, what do you call them? Wind veins is what I call them. The use of these in residential, commercial areas to generate power for those areas and, which is currently prohibited by our zoning ordinance or effectively prohibited. So what Patience has done is put together a presentation that talks about where you might go with this, some of the issues that you have to think about when you're making that amendment, and look for some direction for you at the end if you're going to go drafting ordinance. So go ahead.
All right, thanks. This presentation most, most of it focuses on the residential scale models and less on the big wind farm turbines. So that's what the majority of it is related to. Definitions?
Turbines is the word I was looking for.
Yes.
Turbine, not turbine.
You say turbine or turbine?
Turbine. Turbine's a half.
I don't put up.
PKF.
Okay.
How do you want?
All right. Wind energy is basically what we're referring to, the process in which wind is changed into mechanical power or electricity. The wind energy conversion system, or the turbine, is used to generate the power through a conversion process. These are generally split up into three categories in most ordinances, large, which are large wind farms, medium, and then small, which are typically associated with residential uses. The residential category is broken into two parts, usually horizontal access and a vertical access, and that is with regard to the generator shaft's location relative to the ground. The horizontal ones usually have kind of a windmill-ish appearance, and the vertical tend to have more of like a cylinder look to them. Just a little background, wind power is becoming more popular, particularly as technology improves. In 2012, it added more electricity production than any other single source. The average home needs about 11,500 kilowatt hours of electricity per year, and small turbine, turbines of 10 kilowatt hours are capable of powering a residence. And if your electrical bill is $150 per month or more, the Department of Energy says that it might be worthwhile for you to start investing in some of this technology. Small wind energy systems installed are generally about $7,000 per kilowatt. They can range in cost anywhere from $20,000 to $60,000. There's about 11,000 small wind systems installed in 2011 and 12, and by far, the most popular design is the self-supporting lattice or the guide monopole towers that are freestanding and independent. The other rooftop models are just 9%. The typical 10-kilowatt wind turbine generally has a blade diameter of about 20 to 25 feet. The systems have a lifespan of about 20 to 30 years, and they require very little maintenance. And depending on the cost of electricity in your area and the model you purchase, they can generally pay for themselves with anywhere from six to 30 years. So there's pretty big discrepancy there depending on where you live and what you purchase. Systems are more efficient in areas with greater air density and humidity and at lower elevations. As the size of the blades increase, the energy generated grows proportionally. Some of the advantages to wind energy are that there are no emissions and that there are no natural resources needed to power the systems. It's a readily available infinite resource, and it has a pretty small footprint for each system. Also, the cost of energy is relatively stable. The disadvantages is that they can be uncycly and noisy and potentially harm birds. They aren't a reliable power source 100% of the time, and it can be difficult to transmit. They also have a high cost of initial financing. Boiled down version of how the small turbines work, the power that's generated is transmitted into an inverter where it's changed from direct current to alternating current. Then the electricity is either stored in a battery for use throughout the home, or else the surplus is exported back to the grid. There's primarily two types of small turbine applications. The first is a self-supporting lattice or a guide monopole tower. These are just a few photos of what those look like.
Do you know where those photos are from?
Oh, they're from all over the country.
I don't know where.
The internet.
Yeah, the internet, yes.
Well, it's got to be true. They're going to be on the internet then. So in other words, it could be made-up photos, not real stuff.
Well, I got a couple of these from a magazine.
The legal terms are saying that's correct. It could just be made-up stuff.
Photoshop.
Yeah, where they could put photos on different stuff that's not really there.
And then, these are the rooftop mounted versions. They, these can vary pretty widely in design.
Patience, when you did your research in 9% being rooftop types of installations, did anything break that out as, because it's a relatively newer way of setting things up, be commercial versus residential, any of those types of things?
And I got that stat from Wind Power in America, and basically, it said that the small rooftop ones, they aren't as reliable because they can't get as high in the air, and they're not as large, and that sometimes they cause vibration or noise on the actual residence. But they have, they did say that also, there's been a lot of improvements with these type, and they are getting more and more prevalent.
But they do use them more on commercial applications because you have a larger roof area, you don't have, you have different construction type, and you do on residential, so the vibration.
Yeah, till walls, not going to, yeah.
Exactly. So and as you can see, in order to generate the same energy, you can put 10 of them on a, on a commercial rooftop versus one or two on a residential. So that's why much, much of the residential that you see are your typical pole with the turbine on top.
Thank you.
All right. This is a exhibit that shows the wind suitability, and areas with good exposure to prevailing winds and annual average speeds around four meters per second at a height of 30 meters are generally considered to have a good potential for small wind projects. So to zoom in on Lewisville, we're at the, I don't know if you can see this, but we're at about five meters per second, so we do, we do meet the threshold for having good suit, decent suitability for small wind projects. All right. With regard to regulation when drafting an ordinance, there are several issues that are commonly found in other ordinances, so I'll just go through those briefly. Access, making sure that the turbine is effectively secured. Appearance with regard to design criteria such as style, color, size. Clearance, basically how far the blades must be from the ground. Electrical, whether the lines are underground or overhead. Equipment requiring the controls to be within cabinets, maybe in a fenced area.
Good, all this stuff here, we're putting it in there.
The height, determine how you classify the wind energy conversion systems, and it may be different with regard to different zoning districts or lot size. Lighting, making sure there's no adverse impacts on surrounding properties. Maintenance, meaning that manufacturers, specifications for maintaining the structure. Noise, measuring from the property line typically the maximum decibel level. Improving process, it's generally recommended that a site plan be provided and that the system is certified by a registered engineer. Setbacks, defining a fall zone and also requiring middle distances from adjacent residences, roadways, electrical lines, or other items. Shadow flicker is what is caused when the blades rotate, and sometimes this can be a nuisance for adjacent properties or uses. Signage, potentially disallowing advertising.
That's the ones on the roof.
And making sure that all required warning notices are posted. Enacting standards so that operations for television, radio, or other signals aren't interfered with. And then establishing provisions for rehabbing or removing turbines in the future, turbines. Finally, ensuring that the wind energy conservation systems aren't sited too closely together and comparing some base criteria for zoning districts based on lot size, whether or not provisions for SUP come into play, or differentiating between large and small scale systems. This is a list of potential incentives that someone may be able, maybe may qualify for if they were interested in utilizing a wind energy conservation system, or conversion system.
The fees that might be associated with this would be an electrical inspection.
A global permit or?
Orbidly permitted, certainly the electrical inspection for connection to the electrical system.
Items for consideration, whether to allow small turbines in certain zoning districts by right if they meet established criteria, and then if they don't meet that established criteria, potentially requiring a special use permit.
That begs the question, what is considered a small turbine?
Yeah.
What do you want to include in that category?
And then, I have several examples just from different municipalities around the country, just to see how they differ and what, what things they focus on.
Throw California out. Throw the California out. This is crazy.
This is for Bruceide County, California, Palm Springs. Everybody's familiar with the big wind farms out there. They have separate zoning ordinance for the small and large WCs. They don't require a site plan, but they do require a lot of information, photographs, drawings, height, material, and then also proof of dominant wind direction. The maximum output for their small systems is 20 kilowatt hours, and then the setbacks from dwellings must be at least three times the height.
It'd have to be pretty good-sized lot then, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
How high do the tall ones go? 100 feet?
30 meters.
A residential one generally maybe, maybe 30 to 45, I'd say. Or, and some of these, some of these, like Salem, Massachusetts, it's 150 feet high for their highest.
So you're, 300 feet for many of the residents, yeah.
Those are the ones that are pole-mounted essentially.
Yeah.
These allow the wind or the roof mounted?
They do, and you'll, and you'll see some of them, like this one obviously is Salem, Massachusetts is focusing in on the, on the, yeah, the freestanding. They require acre lot size.
They have a lot of extra poles from the hangings.
Miss Burns.
Well, they hung them too. They hung them first, then bird them. Hung them first, then bird them. You didn't see that new one that's out? She's hanging it, and they're burning. You didn't see nothing new when it's out? She's hanging it and then burned it.
Yes, they're requiring SUP and a site plan. And they allow for a maximum of 60 kilowatt hours. Like I said, the maximum height of 150 feet with setbacks 75% of the structure or per zoning district. Corpus Christi, Texas, they allow one accessory wind energy conservation system by right in all single family residential zoning districts if you meet certain criteria. For lot size, if it's freestanding or for height, if it's roof mounted. So they differentiate and, and the fall radius must be within property lines. They don't allow wind farms. And then any proposal not meeting the established criteria has to go for an SUP and they can't be located in front yards. Oklahoma City, they don't allow roof mounted models. They only allow the freestanding type. They have to be in the rear yard, setbacks are equal to the tower height and they just require a building permit, no site plan or SUP.
Back up for Corpus Christi. So they're saying that they would allow your roof mounted system basically having a pole mounted on the roof that's 15 feet above.
Yes.
Or above. Building permit and structural integrity issue that might have to be.
Denver, they, anything that is under 100 kilowatt hour is allowed under the special exception permit. And they do require a site plan. Has to be 10 feet from property lines and adhered to zoning district requirements. They set up to 30 feet above the highest point of the building in Denver and transmission lines must be underground. Grand Island, Nebraska, they have a micro wind energy conservation system and also a small one. Both of those go up to 100 kilowatt hours. Those are both permitted by right as accessory uses in any zoning district as long as they meet the criteria. No site plan is required, but they do require that all the models used are approved under the certification system from the American Wind Energy Association. And that's all I have.
Patient, do you have, did you have to note when the different ordinances were put into effect? Which might explain why some don't address smaller turbines than others do.
I did not make a note of that, but I can certainly look though.
Because one thing that seems apparent to me is that some of these ordinances may be a little older and haven't been updated. And the technology for small turbines is fairly new. It was obviously driven in order to make them more rooftop mounted, but the difficulty that designers faced was to create a device that could generate with a fairly small turbine size at a fairly low wind speed. And that was the big hurdle. And that's only really been accomplished in the last couple of years, really two, two and a half years. So ordinances that are older aren't going to address smaller turbines.
Sure, yeah, I can go look and see what the timeframes for those are.
Smaller turbines also I think have a tendency to be a little bit more accessible cost wise because you're not having to deal with a pole.
Lot are designed to be roof mounted or have a short three foot pole.
So of course then again that raises the issue for you in a regulatory environment is that how many of those would you allow to have on the roof? One, 10?
Yep.
One for every number of feet, one on each side of the pole. There's a regulatory discussion that hasn't occurred there.
Have to look at it based on lot size.
I think dividing it into at least two and maybe even three classes just initially makes a lot of sense to me because they're, they're very different. You know, for lack of term, audiences for these devices based on their cost and whether they're homeowners or small buildings or large warehouses.
Patient, can you address what our current ordinance says?
The current ordinance.
Believe it, believe you, it's allowed, but you have to go to the council to get permits.
So clean, uh, for the clean, it's not allowed.
No, last I saw, we didn't allow any. Period over and out.
Last time, right? And you always get counsel. Variance.
Well, that's what it was. Because it's not in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, we don't talk about it in the zoning.
It's not in the zoning ordinance, so theoretically somebody will come to you and ask for variance, that's what I'm thinking.
So one of the warehouses came and said, she'll want to put.
She will permit.
There was one interesting design that I didn't see in your pictures, not that it's real important that it be there, but there is a design that's intended to capture the wind flow coming up on the side of a building from wind striking the building. And it's a little bit different from anything you showed.
Yeah, now I can see that one. I'll have to take a look. And there's a lot of.
A lot of innovation going on.
A lot of creativity going on in there.
Language in the ordinance says it's unlawful to do it unless a variance to do so has been granted by the city councils. That's explicitly stated. It's something you could pursue. My knowledge, nobody ever has.
I do like the fall zone, you know, as long as it's within your property or 125% or one of those, I think that makes complete sense. Because the problem I see with the saying, well, it's three times the elevation or one and a half times the elevation, well, does it really need that fall area? And how many people would that prohibit having something?
Yeah, to my mind, clearance is a big, is a big concern, leg clearance, you want to make sure that that's not.
So what do you do with rooftop units or is that top?
For its fall zone?
Certain percentage from the structure?
Pretty minimal if they're not up on a pole.
Yep.
I mean, we don't, we don't have a fall zone for roof ventilation turbines. Why would we have a fall zone for a similar device to generate electricity?
Unless it.
If it was on a pole, you would.
But I'm talking about.
You're literally talking about.
Literally, yes. Yeah. If it were surprisingly similar to a roof ventilation turbine, then why would I have a fall zone?
I feel like that one, it's in the middle, second from the right. See that one? It looks very similar to a ventilation turbine. On the other hand, you've got these other ones that have some poles to read away.
Excited to see it.
Question is, where do you want us to go with it? Preferences you have for opening it up?
If you were to pass something like this and it allowed it, it would not, it would not require homeowners associations to allow it though, correct? If they disallowed it, you could not.
Your ordinance is strictly going to regulate what the city regulates. If the homeowners association has a separate rule or deed restriction that says it's not allowed, then that's going to preempt your ordinance.
Although they went and stayed over, overruled that on solar panels.
And direct TV dish.
And dishes, yeah. So it could happen.
Right, but the city.
But the city you deal with, no.
I mean, what I'd like to see is an ordinance drafted and again, I'd like to look at at least two and probably three different categories. Because just looking up there, I see two or three different categories, so.
And I think something.
So large, medium, small.
Well, sorry. Large, commercial. Pole mounted, small pole mounted and then roof, not pole mounted.
Roof systems. And those roof systems would be commercial or residential.
And the reason for separating out the ones that aren't on a pole is again, for example, the fall zone language would disappear. And I think a lot of the, I don't, I don't know if I'm right, but I'm thinking at least some of the, you know, permitting restrictions and so forth would be a lot more lax.
Yeah. Could they do some roof ones by right if they met the criteria?
As long as everything is UL listed, blah, 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 then it's approved equipment.
Is it still mandatory that the, the group that are transmission people, they have to buy from, they have to buy any access?
I don't know.
I think it is, but it mentions it in here sometime that, that any unused power is put into the, or gives you a credit or something like that.
Well, typically if they give you a, if they give you, if the power company gives you a rebate or something like that, they, they turn around, they get the carbon credits and they'll, they'll pay you a rate for what feeds back into the, into the grid.
First thing you have to have is you have to have a reverse running meter.
Yeah. Usually what you see that is the meter turning backwards.
Yeah.
And not all meters will run in reverse.
I know, mine won't. Sorry, what?
Bring that magnet off of there.
Residential and commercial. Interested in opening it up for both residential and commercial?
Absolutely.
I am. PJ mentioned, so they'll just take them back to the power grid. So Brady, are you gonna have the wires be above ground going from the house to the house? Unless you already, unless that's the way you're getting it there now. I don't know how we do it online.
Underground. Most service lines are over here.
Most, most of it, they're not going to be everywhere because of the cost of the units right now. It may change in the future. And one example, here it is.
Well, overhead, for where it taps into the grid, but if I, if I'm just taking it to a battery pack in my house.
They're all gonna go to an inverter battery pack.
Yeah, well, I would say that if everything on the lot is below ground, you have to put everything below ground. In my neighborhood, the lines on the street are above ground, but everything going to the houses are below ground.
Until it hits, until it hits the meter.
So worried now.
I think it's, let's look at it. I think it, you know, even if you allow it above ground, I would agree that setting a minimum gauge, maximum distance, minimum support, all those kinds of things probably start to play in. But you know, if I'm, I've got a neighborhood that's all above wiring and I'm going to force somebody to go below ground on this. Does it really matter?
Where is your.
Because like you're saying, no matter from the unit, it's going directly to the house.
To the house, to a battery pack, and the battery pack hooks into the, into the, into the wiring in the house.
That, that much going to go underground?
Goes back through the same.
Yeah, goes through the house wiring.
Would need any extra connection.
You just need the run to the turbine, which is the same run that I would have to have for a pool pump or.
As long as you don't, if, if you don't need any additional connection to the grid or to the, to the distribution line.
Yeah, it won't, it won't feed straight to the grid. It goes through a conditioner.
It's a very, it's a kind of a point, it's going to take the path of whatever the current path is, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah, because I can't run, I can't run an above ground to my pool. I'm going to put a pool pump in my backyard, I'm not going to take that wire and run it above ground. I'm going to dig a trench and power it.
Can you run an above ground to an accessory building?
Sure.
Just look around, all those orange codes. All those little orange extension cords, and how do you wire those up?
Sorry about that.
You're running your power off of some neighbor's house and you got a magnet on your deal. You all right. You don't need to, you're less than $150 a month.
Above ground is going to be under ground if you're running the runs, it's going to be okay.
Well, again, the question, how, you got to answer that question, what, what do we do with accessory buildings? How do I tell a homeowner, you can run an overhead line out to your accessory building, you put up a floodlight, but you can't run an overhead line to your pole? I got an idea.
If you want to put a floodlight on the pole. The line you're talking about would be between her and a house connection.
Yes. Yes.
Above.
Yes.
That's going to be basically attached to the house.
Did you hear that Neil?
What?
He just said you can't right now run it above ground.
Any new line is good.
Okay.
There you go.
Under a certain size, which is what, 60 kg?
Plus it's one of those orange.
Glad I moved on.
If, if they, ask them to traverse, move the ground to begin with.
Yeah.
But if it's a roof mounted system.
It's just going to tie in your house, right through the attic.
No, I'm just, this is strictly poles, out in the yard. The question is a pole in the yard or property.
I'm going to need to work out something for multifamily too. Whether it be apartments or whether it be townhouses that have four structures or what? Because I probably won't put them up.
I want to make their own electricity. I know we talked about noise a little bit, is it, is it, I'm not that familiar, is it, is it an issue? I mean, does that. In the January 2012 meeting, a lot of.
It's an issue for maintenance. Usually these systems are relatively quiet unless they're big systems. Big systems tend to be noisy because you've got that, now I'm talking.
But we're talking.
Big.
Yeah, 400 foot blades.
These little roof mounted systems probably don't make any more noise than a roof turbine.
The turbines actually don't make any noise.
If it loses some bearings or something or is not adjusted properly, is rattling against the cage, can be very.
Scrape, scrape or whatever.
Squeak, 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 squeak.
As an air conditioning unit outside can.
Yeah. Or even those little exhaust turbines.
Something else to look into. I think the answer is come back, you know, for a set of workshops.
Can't be con.
And with, you know, look at what cities are doing, like say, look at newer, sorry, ordinances.
Oh, there's another one, pecking.
That, look specifically at rooftops because that's going to.
Height, height issues, anything.
Well, if you can meet the fall zone for a pole, then, you know, I think.
That's from all structures, right, or dwellings? Keep it under the fly zone. The neighbor's dwelling or is it structured? On the fall zone. If there's an outbuilding.
You have to control it, you have to control it.
I said fly zone.
So it can't include your neighbor's yard.
It doesn't include your neighbor's yard?
No.
Usually within your property.
It'll be your property.
That's going to be your property.
What if you have your neighbor.
I'm more concerned about the thing falling on my neighbor.
What purpose?
Why you have fall down?
The fall zone is an area you control so it doesn't fall on your neighbor.
Okay. If I put it at the corner of my lot and it's closer to their house than it is mine, it could fall and I could still put it there?
No.
That's what I'm talking about.
If you have a fall zone.
The fall zone includes the area outside your property.
No, the fall zone is an area within your property, so the thing falls, this unit of property, here's your pole.
Yeah.
Falls, it's.
What if it falls off your property?
If it's on the corner of your property and it falls, that's outside the fall zone and that's not allowed.
Yes.
In other words, you have to cite somewhere.
That it, it wouldn't hit anything outside your property.
Correct.
That's what I'm talking about. Calling it different things, I guess.
You still can't do it though, right?
Right.
Yeah, because if you land on your neighbor's property, even if there's no house.
Even if there's nothing there.
You have to position the thing, so where if it falls, it doesn't touch anything but your stuff.
That's what I was assuming the, the ruling was from the beginning, the fall zone, where it would fall.
Yes.
So when you said structure, are you saying any structure? Somebody just said the property, that's what I'm asking.
My, my understanding is the property and how these are set up.
The ones that seem more with structure. So many feet from structure.
Raw land.
Should be both.
Well, raw land that you own, right? Yeah, can't hit my neighbor's raw land.
Correct.
If you put it 100 feet setback from my private line, you ain't going to be able to put even, they weren't all stuff. You got 200 feet. You don't.
On your property.
It'd be bigger than a half or more.
Yeah, or your house, it could hit your house too.
What about the storage shed on your property?
Some have stipulations that has to be a certain distance from the residence as well.
I mean, is that within?
Patient, patient just mentioned that.
What did she say?
There are some stipulations that case studies for setback distance from your house as well as having a fall zone.
Accessory structures, is that involved?
I, I don't think it was, but it certainly included accessory structures.
The reason for those is clearly so that you don't have poles falling down and damaging buildings of any kind, whether you want it or not. Creating a safety hazard for somebody that might be in the building or near the building.
What about chickens? You have to keep chickens outside of the fall zone?
Not if it's going to fall. Oh, man, you see one of those planes coming up, what is chicken, they don't have any dinner tonight?
Chickens.
Also.
Birds.
It's got fat cat flying too.
Only if they're pole mounted chickens.
Or you got some of them flying chickens.
Anybody got anything else?
No, it's good, sir.
I got, it's going to be hilarious, I don't.
Thanks.
Not a joke.
One question, can I ask the question, whether you want to allow them by right or you want.
What does that mean?
It means that the ordinance basically says, here you go, you can do it as long as you can fly in certain rules.
What difference is that?
Versus going through an H U P every time?
Versus going through a process.
I think if you get the, I think if you can get the, the rules narrow enough, like roof mounted systems, maybe it could be by right. A single, unresidential or-
Storage building, hundred square, hundred square feet?
Yeah, same kind of thing.
Same thing as storage buildings under, we don't call that a right.
It's allowed by a right.
It's a hundred twenty one to me. What if they're left handed? What if they're left handed, do you get it by left, you shoot them. You said by right, I'd have to get it by left too.
Okay, we're good.
I've never heard it called that.
Do you have any, Pasha?
Yes, I do. It won't be in finished form, but-
Rudy, anybody got anything else?
We'll whip something together, it won't be in finished form, but it'll be close enough where you're gonna go.
Thank you, Pasha, anything else?
Appreciate it.
Want to go to the regular agenda? You care what you do, start when you were fourteen?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, this will make you what, forty nine?
Yep.
All right, good boy. See daddy out there now, what can you get out there? Everybody notice that, she's probably getting thirty five a year, perfect attendance award.
Nobody brought cupcakes?
No.
Camels.
Is that the goal of the anniversary, cupcakes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, item one is public hearing.
Mayor, I'll be accusing myself on this item.
Item two. Item three.
Contract that y'all talked about it during the last meeting.
Item four. Item five, I got a question. The wording says, uh... And it says approval resolution authorizing contacts for election services with Denton County and Dallas County, authorization for the mayor to execute the agreement. When you read the administrative contract, it says the proposed resolution authorizes the city manager to execute the agreements.
Normally Denton, we'd always done the city manager, but Dallas does, Dallas does the mayor, so I just didn't catch it. So, but they should both be set up for your suit.
Both of them be shouldn't, so the city manager shouldn't be in there, okay. See, y'all didn't think I read that stuff, did you? You didn't catch it, did you?
Yeah, that's, that's-
You read it, but you just skipped over it.
You knew you'd get it, didn't you?
Okay, item six, do we need to pull that since we got different language there? Probably not, because the crap-
This is just in the admin document.
Yeah, the, the other deal's correct, right? Okay. Item six.
I have a question on item six.
Yes, sir.
If the city code requires that this facility had at least fifty percent of the parking that is needed on their premises, in the backup material it states that they have less than fifty percent. So, if that is the case, are we talking about something that would be against our own code?
It's actually contrary to the ninety six agreement, the ninety six agreement between ourselves and the Bright Farm Partnership incorporated a variety of different requirements for that Castle Hills development, not our code, but in fact, it's gonna be a worse flat third for Castle Hills decision. So, keep that kind of in mind, but this is a variation from that. So, again, that's the reason for it being on the agenda, that they're asking for variance from that ninety six agreement so that this particular lot can have less parking, and the way they're mitigating that is through a shared parking agreement with the lot themselves.
Yeah, I have no problem with the shared parking, but if item, I meant the backup material, eight six point one, the city clock, the city code allows for no more than fifty percent of the required spaces to be located outside if there are shared parking agreements. And if I'm reading it correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's a variance from that.
It's a variance.
Yeah. They're asking you to waive that fifty percent requirement.
Okay.
Based on it being a shared.
Sure, double variance kind of. For the Castle Hills agreement and slash.
If they ever lose, do they have to, if they ever lose that agreement, what do they do? The shared parking agreement?
Well, it's gonna be incorporated as part of the, uh... Plan for our lot, so I don't know that we wouldn't have to process it again before the council pardon parcel of the approved certificate of documents for that location, or if we actually do a C O, but that location can be permitted with this variance in place, and if it disappeared, then we're gonna enforce that against the existing law.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Item seven.
Got a couple of things I'd like to-
Oh, let's don't have a bunch of cackling over this.
Um, just a couple of things. One, I'd like to see if anybody'd be interested in changing the setbacks of the coop from the ten foot to five foot to line up a little more closely with our current accessory buildings.
Setback from the primary residence you're talking about.
Correct, and from other accessory buildings for that matter.
Referring to section?
Um, I don't think I do, maybe I've got a note on it.
Are you talking about from your neighbors' residential?
No, no, the twenty five foot, I, I've kind of gotten a feel for that one's not gonna be a conversation I can have very well.
It's actually three point one five nine, there's a clause that says, clause number two, that coops and or closures shall be a minimum of ten feet from the onsite primary residential building, so let's call that the house.
Yeah.
So, the current requirement is that it be at least ten feet away from the house. Reason we recommended that was because we actually differentiate this type of structure for the purpose of setbacks from a, from a storage building because the health safety issue represented by chicken, dedication, and we just felt like it was more appropriate that to be a little bit further away from the house than a regular storage building. Storage building can be right next to the house as long as it's a hundred twenty feet away. Put a storage building right on your outside wall, right next to the room, whatever you want to do. So, what this, if this would do is be treated the same way as a storage building, we felt like it needed to be something.
And my, my compromise would be that it's not right up against, but it's at least five feet, and that matches with the zoning on a hundred and twenty one square feet, accessory buildings are higher. Those are, just so it keeps the same rules as the bigger storage building, even though it's technically small. I just think it gives people a little more opportunity to place something in their yard.
Any setback would be better than no setback, so that's a good approach.
So, that, that was, that was one. The other language, I'm gonna throw it out there, if they've got a wooden fence, I think it counts. I, so the way the ordinance, the way I understand the ordinance as written here is we have a coop and then we have a fenced in area within the yard. And that, that is the chicken run, like a dog run, right? You then take those birds and you're gonna concentrate them into that one small area, you're gonna tear up the grass just like you would if you take a dog and you put them in that small area. In my opinion, keep the coop setbacks twenty five feet from the neighbor's five feet, or keep the coop setbacks exactly the way they are. But if you have a wooden board on board fence, opaque fence, then your chickens can roam that whole area. You still have a coop, you still have the setbacks away so that where the chickens are gonna be, but you're gonna spread that bird around the backyard, which is part of the way that works. So, in my mind-
So, the wood fence would be your fenced in?
Would be your enclosed area, so instead of having an envelope within an envelope. Now, if you've got a chain link fence or something like that, no, you're gonna have to have a smaller enclosed area.
Why, so why, why, is there a difference just so your neighbors don't have to see the chickens?
Noise.
Noise.
I would think people don't see, not everybody sleeps during, not everybody, chickens don't stay in the coops at night, right?
No, they stay in the coop at night.
I said they, I'm sorry, they do stay in the coop, but they'll, they don't during the day.
They don't during the day.
So, if you got somebody that works at night and sleeps during the day, and then you got those chickens sitting over right underneath their window next door to you, like that's where he's coming out of a wood fence and help a sound barrier a little bit better than a chain link fence.
Yeah, that, that to me, that's, that's the difference.
I'm assuming-
We call that free range amendment, because basically the chickens are free ranging inside the yard wherever they wanna go. The problem with that from our standpoint is that it eliminates the setback, the setback disappears because the chickens can be at the property line of the house.
But the coop's still setback.
But the coop's still setback.
Within feet of your window, of your bedroom window, that's an AP T J gun.
Yeah, we've had, we've gone around and around.
Then it's okay.
My bedroom window is about five and a half feet from my neighbor's fence line, and so-
Does your, does your neighbor have dogs or just chickens?
Dogs, but I would apply to dogs too.
Yeah, see now, this whole ordinance, yeah, see this whole ordinance opens up a whole lot of things when you start talking about dogs.
My neighbors would too.
Yeah.
So...
That, that's my take on it, I, I just, you're gonna concentrate the chickens, most folks either are gonna have a mobile coop to deal with that, which this doesn't even talk about mobile coops, but those could be really interesting.
The enclosure within the enclosure is to, one additional measure of keeping them out of the, from escaping.
Out of, what?
Having the enclosure within the fence designed to try to keep them from having escapes. Although you don't have to have a fence, all you have to have is an enclosure, you don't have to have that perimeter fence, but most people do. So, we looked at it as kind of a fence within a fence to make sure that chickens weren't escaping.
Now what happens, what public danger do we incur when a chicken escapes?
Well, they escape as fast as they can, if they get in from a light or in a hurricane, and then the other, it's time to be tested by chickens.
Let's follow your eye on a second.
Chasing chickens all over the-
We have coyotes.
Hawks.
Possums?
Hawks, no.
Yeah, that, that was, I, I would like to see the fence or the free range amendment, if you guys have already labeled it that way, that gives us- Yeah, I'd like to see that added.
When you talk about, one thing I said though, when you talk about dogs and chickens, dogs only bark as much as chickens.
See how things work.
Where you always take away, like-
Chickens are cluck, continuously.
It's not as easy to take something away.
Where dogs only bark usually, usually.
Yeah, see my neighbor's dog.
If you get a lot of complaints, you're making fortune in that situation.
You don't wanna make, usually, most dogs don't bark constantly.
I, I, you know, at this point, I don't know if you make anybody happy with, with either way. To me, I just, I like the concept of the free range because it allows the chickens to get, because the folks that are doing this, they're doing gardening, they're, they're, they're doing some of that, that kind of stuff, and, and having the chickens circulate within that area, it, you know, keeps insects down, it, it helps distribute the fertilizer, which some might find that to be a negative, I, I don't know. I don't know, but that's, that's my take on it, I'd like to see that changed. And, you know what, we do it this way for a year, we don't have any issues, we can come back and look at it, we can always change it as a council, so I understand that option's available too. Regardless, this is a great step forward, I really appreciate all the time that staff has put into it and a lot of the effort. It is a very comprehensive ordinance, in fact, it makes some of our old ordinances look way out of date when you look at it versus other animals, and so I, I do appreciate that.
I think also when you compare it to other city ordinances, this is gonna be one of those model ordinances that people are looking at. Because a lot of these other ordinances-
A lot of them are just, have a chicken. And, and-
That's true, that's true.
That, there's something nice to be able to say, just have a chicken, I, I get that too, but we live with neighbors and we live in a neighborhood, so. That's, that's my take, that's what I'd like to see, but I'll vote for this however it ends up.
You said you have one more?
Those are my two.
I have a question about the size, the R seven point five.
Why is it, it's not R seven point five, it's seventy five hundred square feet.
It's a different size lot.
Size lot has to be seventy five hundred, it's not R. Size is the actual size of the lot, not the zone of the district.
Seventy five hundred square feet.
Yes.
So, you've got R fives and R six fives that meet that.
Zone lot that's seventy five hundred feet, you're okay.
Okay. Or if you had an R five zoned lot that was seventy five hundred square feet, you would be okay?
You'd still be okay.
Yeah, you're still okay.
Okay.
It's a, it's a big chunk of the city.
There are, there are few out there, but like that.
All right.
Well, the best example Eric brought up was Creek Estates. Which happens to be his own townhouse way back when. Islestone Ridge, and they're all eddies, big lots, his own townhouse.
Big single stories.
I doubt there's one over that gets less than eight or nine thousand people. So, they would be in my ownership, or his own townhouse.
Okay.
Houghmine's Middle School can have one too, I found out today. And Roosters.
What school?
Free range chickens.
Yeah, well, there you go. So, those were my two, guys, that's just for thoughts.
Anything else? Okay, item eight.
So, I talked with Claude about this and, and I'm clear, this just adds more burden to the developer basically on the front end that they have to come up with.
Well, it's always been there, this is pit four, and it's been in place for a while.
Okay.
When it was approved several years ago, it was approved with that same burden in it, so that part.
Is there a chance-
See, we used to, it has that requirement because the attorney general basically changed your position.
Is there ever a chance that the first three pits will end up having that issue?
No, not with debt that's already been issued.
Okay, so it's all, it's all over dead.
Different, uh...
Item nine. Item ten.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining on that since I worked for the press at this.
Who is the candidate we supported previously?
Well, I, I'm not really sure who we did.
And what you're doing here, this is a nomination, so I don't know if that's where you're heading. You'll still have a chance to vote for the nominating candidates when you're on.
We're asking for-
Whether you nominate somebody or not.
The maximum of five.
That's number of directors yet.
Up to five individuals, you nominate one.
Oh, for nomination, yeah, each.
What's this, you can nominate up to five individuals.
Basically, we've got four who are asking to be reappointed, so.
Yeah, that's why I said one.
I don't know who the one would be.
One vacancy that you can nominate.
Right.
Five names. I love anybody over here.
Anything else? The Rudy, come back. Where'd Rudy go?
Again, a quarrel. Tell him to quiet down.
I have to sign an autograph out there. It's tough. Put TJ Gilmore in there.
I know it. Chicken man.
Chicken man, I like that. He's got a hat he's gonna wear tonight.
There you go, I need a hat.
Item eleven. Adam eleven.
This doesn't limit our flexibility moving forward, does it?
It makes it easier, easier to plan.
Adam twelve.
Just plan to do this at random, like we did the last time?
No, this is just adopting the ones that, this is just nominating the ones that filled out an application after we nominated all twenty-four, twenty-five, we don't get that discussion. There was twenty-four or twenty-five of them that we nominated to the committee, and then there were some people that came in, wanted to serve on the committee itself later, and then they will be assigned to a subcommittee later on. This is just to adopt them to the twenty-twenty-five committee.
But, but it's, I think it's very important to get these particular people in the right committee.
Well, that's...
Pretty sure he's pulling that.
Your face is turning a little red.
All I know is you've just stolen the Chicken Man's thunder.
All right, so this is not, we're not putting anybody in eighty-seven committees, we're just putting them all in twenty-twenty-five.
And then allow, allowing staff to...
Randomizes.
We're gonna have to bring that, we'll have to, subcommittees in. All right. Thirteen.
Person thirteen.
Just right after twelve.
Then you also have gotten my email with the memo.
Yes, I did. Hey, you have a question, council?
Since there's no backup, let's get it.
You have a question, council? Julie, councilor? Well, we're adjourned.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a quorum, we call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation, excuse me, given by Councilman Ferguson, and in the pledge both American Texas flag, led by Councilman Durham.
Please rise for a moment of silent prayer, and when, when you do, please keep our fire chief tittle in mind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texans, one state under God, one and invisible.
Just a little bit.
I don't care how loud this is, it's high.
I could ask Georgiana Burkett, Martha Kinnon, and Pollard Lawler, please.
Tonight, we have a very special award that we are proformation we will present tonight, and these are three wonderful ladies that have come to give us a little information and represent an organization that I think you'll be surprised to hear about and excited to hear about. So, with that, whereas the label chapter of the National Society Colonial Dames Eighteenth Century Flower Mount, Texas, is locally sponsoring National Colonial Heritage Month during the month of October two thousand thirteen. And whereas National Colonial Heritage Month brings to mid, to mind the first courageous settlers who arrived in America and who determined the direction for the formation of our country. And whereas the members of this society, by virtue of their lineal descent from those early arrivals, feel an obligation to work for the preservation of the priceless legacy that these early arrivals left to all American citizens. And whereas they continue to convey the true meaning of the inheritance by reminding us that our privilege to live in a free country has stemmed from loving our country, obeying its laws, respecting its flag, and defending it against all enemies. Now, therefore, I, Dean Eufer, Mayor of the City of Louisville, on behalf of the Louisville City Council, by virtue of authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand thirteen as National Colonial Heritage Month in the City of Louisville, and encourage all citizens to observe this month as means of reinforcing the priceless legacy that we inherit with our citizenship, in order to help preserve our rich culture and heritage with deep, deep respect for the principles on which our great country was founded. Now, on this two thousand, this seventh day of two thousand, October two thousand thirteen, would one of you ladies like this be? Or would each one of you?
Yes, I got the short straw.
Okay.
No pun intended, right?
Yeah, no pun.
She said she drew the short straw, but I said there was no pun intended.
Hey. It's Colonial Dame Seventeenth Century Label Chapter, and it was, it was established two or three years ago, the chapter here in the area. Colonial Dame Seventeenth Century is a lineage organization, and it, in order to, to become a member, you have to prove your ancestry from one of the, I like to say, one of the members that laid the foundation for this great country. So, if they came between sixteen-oh-one and seventeen-oh-one, and they were either a planter or in the government or the military, or they, they did something, they gave something to, to start this great country, then you're eligible to be a member. One of our things, what we do for patriotic, obviously, education, and, and we also honor our memorial ancestors.
Well, thank you very much, let's get a photo here. I think you did a good job.
And now, I have a very special award that I want to present, and if I could, Mr. King or City Manager, if I had you come down and join me, and Ms. Kerbo, could I please have you come up and join us, please?
Can we all?
All of you, please, come on down. James, good to see you, sir. Good to see you, man. Hi, Brad, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. I bet you, good to see you. You know, we do have a wonderful organization work here, and the reason we do here have such a great organization here in this community is because, I think, because of the team members that we have that work day in and day out, and devote much more of their lives than just the nine-to-five, or the seven-to-seven, or twenty-four hours a day sometimes, to the community, but they devote their, they devote their entire life to the community. And this perfect example is our Chief William Kerbo. And Chief Kerbo, better known as Russ Kerbo, Chief Kerbo is, is, went to high school here, graduated, lived here, I'm not sure, all his life, but lived here a big part of his life, and is well-respected in the community and well-known in the community. So, at this time, we'd like to ask Chief Kerbo to come up and receive a special award from the City of Louisville. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our City Manager, Mr. Claude King, and he's gonna actually tell you a little bit more about this award.
What we're going to do today is a thirty-five-year service award, and this is a fairly rare occurrence at the City of Louisville. We don't have very many employees who have thirty-five years with the city. Heck, the city hadn't been around a whole lot longer than that, so, we do have, we do have a problem, but Russ is a, a member of a small fraternity, and basically started his career here as police officer, and has gradually worked his way up over those thirty-five years to be Chief of Police. And I think that's a fairly rare thing that deserves some recognition publicly, and hopefully there's thirty-five more years in ya, I don't know what that makes you when you retire, but...
Old and tired. He's only forty-nine now, but he started at age fourteen, graduated high school.
Yeah. His service began on May twenty-second, nineteen seventy-eight, so actually, he's probably got closer to thirty-five and a half now. We've just been looking for a good opportunity to present this to him publicly, and we have a small token of our appreciation in the form of the service award, and of course, we do have a thirty-five-year service pin, and it, coincidentally, looks a little bit like a thirty-five. I don't like there's any connection, but I'd like to have your beautiful wife put that on you.
Yeah, you could have got a vest on. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you could do this for this many years without a great support system. My son, James, and his wife, Jessica, on the end, and grandson, Bradley, and my beautiful and lovely wife of over thirty-one years, Becky Kerbo. requests from agricultural open space to light industrial on seven-point-zero-five-seven acres located at five-zero-seven Barthneck Lane, seventeen-forty-nine Rain Tree Lane, seventeen-fifty-three Rain Tree Lane, five-seventeen Barthneck Lane, and the southeast corner of the intersection of Barthneck Lane and Rain Tree Lane, further identified as tracks thirty-two and thirty-three of the S.M. Hayden survey, abstract five-three-seven, as requested by Metro Auto Section, the property owner. The Dallas Metro Auto Auction is interested in expanding their current operation and has purchased approximately seven acres of property adjacent to their existing site. A plot is being prepared to combine the subject tracks into one large lot, and a special use permit with associated engineering site plan will be required. The proposed zoning classification of light industrials in keeping with the recommendations of the East Louisville Plan and prevalent zoning pattern of the surrounding area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by photo five-zero at their September third, two thousand thirteen, meeting. Recordation of staffs that council approved the ordinance as set forth in the above caption.
Mayor?
Yes?
I will be recusing myself from this item as I operate a restaurant inside of Metro Auto Auction.
Did not have any speaker cards filled out for anyone to speak, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
A motion, close first public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Vaughn, I believe it was?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Uh, move to, move to approve the request.
Have a motion by Councilman to approve as presented?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore, councillor? Try pressing the button, see if it works.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the seven-point-zero-five-seven acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from agricultural open space district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is it working now, councillor? Because you're gonna have to do it again. Okay, now it's working, thank you. Item two is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending chapter seventeen, section seventeen dash three-zero of the Louisville City Code to modify the prohibited, the prohibition related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in a retail establishment for off-premise consumption within three hundred feet of a church, public or private school, or, or public hospital to include the sale of all alcoholic beverages. Louisville City Code currently prohibits the sale of beer and wine with off-premise consumptions by retail establishment that is located within three hundred feet of a church, public or private school, or public hospital. On November fifth, two thousand thirteen, a local election, local option election will be held to determine whether the sale of all alcoholic beverages, not just beer and wine, will be allowed for off-premise consumption within the city limits. In order to address this potential change, the city's ordinance needs to be amended to include all alcoholic beverages. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the recommended approval by, of the amendment by a vote of five-zero at their September third, two thousand thirteen. Did not have any speaker cards filled out for this item. Entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to close public hearing, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve.
Have a motion?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as set forth above, in the caption above.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion, councillor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter seventeen zoning, section seventeen dash thirty, sale of alcoholic beverages, by modifying the prohibition related to the sale of alcoholic beverages in a retail establishment for off-premise consumption within three hundred feet of a church, public or private school, or public hospital, to include the sale of all alcoholic beverages, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is the Visitor Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did have a card here filled out, speak, Mr. Tommy Seaman, is that correct? Yes, sir, if you'd like to come forward this time, please, sir. If you would just come to the mic, and I'm sorry, I forgot to turn the mic back around, if you'll pull that around for me, please, sir, and then just state your name and address for the record. And thank you very much.
Okay, my name is Tommy M. Seaman, my address is fifteen-oh-nine Waterford Drive, Louisville, Texas. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to kind of give you a little background here and try to fill out what this is all about, is your new ordinance that has been put in earlier this year concerning outbuildings on your property. Back in nineteen, or back in two thousand and two, my wife and I moved here, we had a shed in our backyard at that time that was there. The shed was built on, somebody built it on the ground, which was not a good idea, allowing it to rot. Okay, at that time, I went through several different things, I was a pretty sick person, individual at the time, and we had new fences that had to be put in. One of y'all's inspectors had come by and said that it needed to be repaired. One of y'all's inspectors had come by and said that it needed to be repaired. I got a letter, took care of that. I've tried to take care of my business. I'm hoping that this will be a chance for y'all to help me. Okay, this fall, I decided that that shed was in pretty rough shape, needed to be torn down. If I would have known what I know now, I might not have done that. Okay, I went to Home Depot, remember that the shed is 10 by 16, the one I had, had. I went to Home Depot after I had torn down the old shed and ordered the new 10 by 16 Later, I received a call from Tough Shed stating that they could not install the new shed because of the new ordinance that went into effect earlier this year. I have since been told that the new shed in the size that I had in the backyard would now have to be brick to match my home. And just for City Council's knowledge, I don't think any other city in this area requires that. Was told that a new building would have to be movable, back in, this was in 2002. I queried one of the inspectors that, who had talked to me about my fence. And at that time, they said that a portable building would have to be movable. I'm trying to say now, why, how are you going to move a brick building? You know, it's not easy to do. If I'd been made aware of this new ordinance, I would not have torn down my old shed. And it is my understanding that I could have repaired that under the old ordinance, which needless to say, I didn't know about. I would hope that maybe you could grandfather me the ability to go ahead and replace my shed at this time. I understand that that would have to go in front of the committee that's here. I've talked to some of my other neighbors, and they feel that this ordinance should have been public. And to my knowledge, we, none of us has ever seen this ordinance. I think that any time an ordinance like that is passed, it needs to be either included with a water bill or put out on a quarterly basis. My hobby, the thing I like to do a lot, is refinish furniture. And it takes a lot of equipment. I use a table saw, bandsaw, heavy, some pretty heavy power tools. And the building that it, I had 10 by 16 was just barely big enough. I need a resolution on this as soon as possible, because at the present time, now that I've already torn my other building down, I had to move all that equipment out, and it's mostly sitting on my patio. And so I'm kind of between the hard and the rock place, between the rock and the hard place. And my place, please remember that my home at that, when it was first built, was a show home out there. And they did not put a garage on it. They converted the garage into offices. So all I have is a carport. And like I said, in the future, I would hope that y'all would please put out these new ordinance and let people know better as to what's going on. I want to thank you for this time. I hope you take this matter very seriously and let me know what your plans are, so that I can go ahead and expedite my own plans. And please keep in mind, winter's coming on. I don't have a lot of time here. Like I said, I've talked to the people at Tough Shed, and they've told me that no other city in this area requires this strict compliance. Also, remember that the cost to Seaman to make a slab is, you know, that's just about 10 cents, I mean, $10 a square foot. Also citing, my understanding is price of bricks up quite high right now. So this would be almost financially, I'm not going to say impossible, but certainly would not be well within just everybody's range. And I've talked to all my neighbors. They feel pretty much the same way that I do. The, not a problem with the shed, the only problem is, is if the sheds are not properly maintained, or if they're, you know, eyesore.
Okay. Well, we can't take any action on this item tonight, as I think you were told, we can't take it. But I will make sure that somebody from staff does contact you and work with you and see what we can do, okay? As far as the publication goes, I would like City Manager Two to tell her one that there is actually a notification given to the public any time an ordinance is passed. So if you would explain that, City Manager.
As you know, we debated this over several workshops and council meetings dating back to retreat discussions, so there was certainly plenty of public discussion of the ordinance amendments. And then the formal requirement that you're referring to is public notice and publication in a newspaper of record, which of course was also done before the effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you very much, sir. We might want to look at putting on our quarterly, on our newsletter, also put it in, do it in there that would include ordinances, new adopted ordinances or changed ordinances for the public awareness. Thank you, sir. I, Mr. Ferris is there willing to talk to you? He's with staff there, if you want to visit with him about it. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I did not have any cards filled out for anyone to have anything pulled, and no one asked anything to be pulled. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve consent agenda, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item six, is consideration a request for variance to 1996 Castle Hills Agreement Regarding All Street Parking Requirements for Castle Hills Kitty Academy located at 2520 King Arthur Boulevard, as requested by the Castle Hills Shops LLC, the property owners. Castle Hills Kitty Academy located on Lot 3R-1 of the Village Shops Edition is a new childcare facility that is approximately 8,500 square feet in size. An approved engineering site plan was obtained for the site. However, a recent replac caused the site to fall out of compliance with an on-site parking requirements. Kitty Academy has less than 50% of required parking spaces located on the lot. Therefore, variance is being requested to allow for less than 50% of the required on-site parking to be located on the lot utilizing a shared parking agreement with three adjacent development lots. Recordation of staff that council approved the requested variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I have no problems to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Tierney to approve, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I did have a card here, I'm sorry, filled out by Lucas Patterson, but he was here not to speak, but only to answer any questions. He was with Kitty Academy parking issue. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville City Code, Section 2-201, fee scheduled establishing a fee for...
I did take a bow, did I?
Consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville City Code, Section 2-201, fee schedule establishing a fee for keeping chickens in Chapter 3, providing for regulations for the keeping of chickens in the city. Staff presented a report to council at the February 2013 council retreat and again at the August 19, 2013 city council workshop session regarding the keeping of domestic chickens in the city. Ordinance has been prepared that establishes an animal permit fee and provides for regulations for the keeping of chickens for certain residential properties within the city. Recordation is the city council approved the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I'd like to move the ordinance with...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I do have a couple cards here. I'm sorry, sir. Before we did that, had Mr. Jonathan Hightower wanted to speak? If you would come forward, sir, at least give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name's Jonathan Hightower. I live at 1485 Juniper Lane here in Louisville. You've seen me before, brought the group to the council back in December. And there are a couple of alterations that we'd like to see made to make the currently proposed ordinance a lot more viable. I'd like to get this done in a way that keeps us from having to have anybody come back to the council in one, or three, or six months and say, hey, we need to change this. The biggest problem with the ordinance as currently written is that it requires that the chickens be kept in an enclosure or pen at all times. There are several reasons that this is a problem. First, it's a cookie cutter answer. It keeps people from using whatever method is best suited to their yard, its layout, their goals, how many hens they're keeping, so on. Some of you may be familiar with chicken trap, the movable pen that people use to keep their chickens contained, move them around the yard so they can scratch areas. Other people may want to keep their chickens in an enclosure, run for part of the day, let them out for part of the day so that they have the run of the entire yard. There are multiple options that are all workable in a suburban environment. Restricting us to just an enclosure full-time eliminates them. Second, a major advantage of having chickens in your backyard is they eat weeds and bugs. If they're limited to a pen or enclosure, the only bugs they're going to eat are going to be the ones that are dumb enough to fly or jump into the pen. The bugs in the rest of the yard will be left alone. Third, have you ever seen what happens to the dirt floor of a small chicken run? Same thing that happens when you get any number of animals confined in a small space. Grass, clover, any kind of ground cover you have is only going to survive so much traffic. You're going to end up with a bare dirt patch inside the enclosure. When it rains, muddy and messy. And when it's dry, it's going to be dusty. Regular soil ecology, bacteria plants and so on that help break down chicken feces is going to be disrupted, so you're actually more likely to have an odor problem. Fourth, dogs inside a fence can be a nuisance. They run along barking at people who are walking past, try to dig their way out, they always poop in the same place, usually near the fence. Chickens don't do any of these things. Why should chickens be confined to a pen when no other animal, not even pot-bellied pigs, are restricted that way? And fifth, the ordinance for lots that are one acre and up specifies a minimum of 100 square feet per chicken. The ordinance proposed for normal-sized lots specifies merely 100 square foot minimum for six chickens. This is not internally consistent. I don't think anybody's going to propose making people build a 600 square foot pen in their backyard to keep six chickens. So in summary, the ordinance needs to have the enclosure requirement removed so that people are free to make their own decisions based on their goals and situations. It makes more sense, it's more fair, and I think we should do what just about every other city that staff studied and compared to does, and just say that the fence for the backyard has to be sufficient to contain the chickens. The second issue with the current proposal is that it limits chickens to lots size R7.5 and above. New problems with this? The first one is that there are some lots in this city zoned R5 and R6 that are in fact 7,500 square feet. So if you limit it to how it's zoned, you're not actually going off of the square footage of the lots, you're just going off of what block it's in. So if you do want to maintain the requirement and treat everybody fairly as far as the size requirement, you need to go to square footage. But then if you do that, you may end up with a situation where there are people...
She is written that way.
It is now the square footage?
Yes.
Okay. Even with that, you still could, go ahead.
Just want you to go on.
Let him finish, and then we'll, we'll do some stuff to ask. Your five minutes is about up, so I'm going to need you to wrap this up.
Okay. You just could end up with people on the same street with different sized lots where some of them can keep hens and some of them couldn't, from a 50 or 100 square foot swing distance space. We've got setback requirements in the ordinance already that are great, and so I'm not sure why someone shouldn't have chickens if they have a 6,800 square foot lot, but not if they have a 7,800 square foot lot. Your setback should take care of that anyway, because if you can meet the setbacks, you have a decent sized backyard. So two changes, lot size restriction and requirement to keep chickens pinned up instead of letting people make their own choices about that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Then I had Brian Stout?
I'm Brian Stout. I live at 1379 Clear Creek Drive here in Louisville. I've been a citizen of Louisville for almost all my life. And I was very happy to see the movement for the chickens coming to Louisville, being brought up for the council. My main topic is the, just that the council use logic and make sense, make good sense of this. The parameters of my fence, I feel, would be sufficient to contain chickens as they do my dogs. And the thought of having to build an enclosure inside my backyard, I just feel that the money that I may spend on that would be money that I could put towards anything that needed to happen to my exterior fence already that would actually, you know, probably make my neighbors a lot happier. And so I just implore the council to make sense of this and put together a plan where we can make this beneficial, because I feel this is the first step, opening the door towards things like nutrient-dense food and people doing a little more organic gardening and all the great possibilities and all the possibilities of ways and programs where we could educate the citizens of Louisville about the benefits of, you know, growing things at home and starting a garden and all those kinds of things. So I would just really like to see this, you know, take shape in a way that would allow a lot of people to get in the door with the backyard chickens and open the door and educate their neighbors and other folks in town as to how great the possibilities are. And I just really appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Now, did have a card here by Amanda Hightower at 1485 Juniper Lane. She is in support of the item, but she did not wish to speak. Okay, now, Councilman Gilmore first. Mr. King, you want to address the issue that you were talking about, the square footage earlier?
Yeah, I was just trying to save a little bit of time because the issue of whether it's R5 or R7.5 or other versus 7,500 square feet, the ordinance is actually written at 7,500 square feet. It does not link to the zoning classification. So if you happen to have that size square footage and you're in R5, you're okay.
Or any type of zoning actually.
Correct, it would apply to any of the residential districts.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Councilman Gilmore now, please, sir.
Super Mayor, appreciate it. The ordinance is pretty, pretty good. I appreciate all the time that staff and council have put on it. I would like to move with one change in language. So I'm going to read that change in language, and then we can see where it goes from there. So I would move that we accept the ordinance as written with the following changes to Sections 3-159, setbacks that detach single-family lots of 7,500 square feet in size or larger but not exceeding one acre, coops and/or enclosures other than a board-on-board wood fence which encloses the entire rear or side yard of a residence. Whichever is nearer shall be no less than 25 feet from any adjacent residential or commercial building. Point two, coops and/or enclosures other than a board-on-board wood fence which encloses the entire rear side or side yard of a residence shall be a minimum of five feet from the on-site primary residential building. And three, measurements shall be made from the nearest point of the coop enclosure to the closest point of the primary residential structure and/or adjacent residential or commercial building. What this change in language does is it addresses the fence within a fence, and it changes the coop setback from the primary residence to five feet to be more in line with our accessory building ordinance. Those are the only changes that I have at this time.
Now, what you're saying though, I want to make sure you're clear, is what you're saying, it addresses the point of a fence within a fence as long as the exterior fence is a wood fence, correct?
That is correct.
Board-on-board specifically.
Board-on-board specifically.
Yeah, something that can't be seen through.
I'm sorry, board-on-board specific, I'm sorry. But not like a chain-linked fence, wouldn't have...
Not like, if it was a chain-linked fence, then you'd be a fence within a fence.
Right. Anything else, sir? Mr. King, you had something?
Let me make sure I understand what the proposed amendment is. It's in Section 3.159, correct?
Correct.
So we're talking about coops, potentially?
Correct.
And so you're saying that a coop can be right on the property line?
No, I'm saying that the coop can be, it still has to meet within the 25 feet and the five feet, but that the fence can be on the property line, as it is today.
I'd ask that you restate the amendment so I'm clear on what he's got here.
Here you go, Claude, I've got the text right here. Per our attorney, so I know it's great.
While he's looking over that, Councilman Ferguson, did you have anything?
Not at this time.
Councilman Vaughn, did you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
Councilman Durham?
I still can't hear very well down here.
I still can't hear very well down here.
Before we go, we need to either go back to the old system that we had in here before this went over, or we need to get this fixed by the next council meeting. One of the... Half the time you couldn't understand it, man, Rudy just couldn't hear me. He just could not hear me. And I think everybody else out there can hear me, I don't know, but Rudy couldn't hear me. So we need to either go back to the old system or get this one fixed by the next meeting.
It seemed to be working better earlier. Earlier in the meeting, it seemed to be...
Yours isn't even working.
I've got it, I'm pushed to talk.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to be opposed... I was opposed to this before the changes were made, so it doesn't have anything to do with the changes. So, and I'm just going to go back to history. There's a reason that there's an ordinance against chickens in the city limits. It's mainly because of the odor, and I'm going to stick with that. There's a reason it was done in the past, there's a reason to keep it that way. So, thank you.
Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I'm okay with the ordinance as it's written, as is. I wouldn't be opposed to considering Councilman Gilmore's changes in a future date. I'd be okay with kicking this off as it's written and potentially considering that change in the future.
Any further discussion? I hear a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve the ordinance as written.
Second.
A second by Councilman Vaughn. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nate? We have four in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Item eight is consideration of an ordinance approving the 2013 Annual Assessment Service Plan update for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four. The City Council created Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four in April 2007.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I never read the caption.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon, Mayor. Counselor?
An ordinance...
Getting in, I'll revoke.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas amending the Lewisville City Code Chapter Two, Section Two-Dash-Two-Zero-One Fee Schedule by adding a permit fee for the keeping of chickens and Chapter Three animals by adding several definitions and an article relating... regulating the keeping of chickens within the city, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
This is on item seven, once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I get a quick clarification? Was that's on my motion, which includes the amended language, correct?
No. You didn't make a motion. Councilman Tierney made the motion, and Councilman Vaughn seconded the motion.
I think we need to check the tape, because the first words out of my mouth were, I make a motion to X.
He did make a motion, but there was no second at that time.
Yeah, I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it. I didn't request for a second. That's fine, we can just... But just for the interest of clarity, we might need to step it back.
Okay, we'll go back and start over. First, we need to... Well, we've had a motion approved and seconded and voted on, correct?
Yes, sir.
So unless you want... I don't know how...
We had a motion, but did it die for lack of a second? Was it ever asked for a second? I did not hear a second on my motion.
No, it wasn't asked for a second. I didn't hear the motion either, Mayor.
I didn't either. Obviously, half of us came here after what's being said, so that's part of the problem.
Okay, well, then, my motion is with the language, and if it dies for lack of a second, that's fine, so...
So, Counselor, how do we go back and correct this issue? Actually, he said that in his initial comments that he was making it a motion. I didn't hear that part that he said he made a motion. I'm not saying he didn't.
I just looked back in my notes, and he did make a motion.
Okay. Now, I didn't call for a second, but there was not a second. And then I asked everyone else for comments, and then there was a... And then I asked for a motion, and then Councilman Tierney made a motion, which was different from the motion that Councilman Gilmore made. Then Councilman Vaughn seconded that motion, and then I asked for any other discussion, and there wasn't any, and then we took a vote.
Right. The first, Mayor, the first motion in essence failed for a second, for lack of a second, even if you didn't ask for one, someone could have seconded. So it's been voted on.
You hear that?
That's fine.
Did you hear that?
I did.
Okay. So you're okay with this?
It's a step closer, thank you.
I apologize for that.
That's all right, Mayor. I just was surprised that mine actually got through there for a second. That's what I thought had happened.
Counselor, is your mic working now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Item eight is consideration of an ordinance approval... A consideration of an ordinance approving the 2013 Annual Assessment Service Plan update for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four. Y'all through?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The City Council created Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four in April 2007. A supplemental assessment service plan was adopted on January 7, 2008. Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code requires that the assessment service plan be updated annually. The plan defines the annual indebtedness and the projected cost of improvements to be provided by the PID in the manner of assessing the property in the PID for the cost of the improvements. City Council approved the ordinance as... Recommendation of the Council is that City Council approved the ordinance as set in the above caption. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. A move to approve as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas updating the Assessment Service Plan and Assessment Role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is consideration of an ordinance approving a negotiated resolution between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's 2013 Annual Rate Review Mechanism filing in all cities exercising original jurisdiction. Staff's comments is the city is a member of the Atmos Cities Steering Committee. In 2007, ASCC, A-C-S-C, and Atmos Mid-Tex agreed to implement an annual rate review mechanism known as the rate review mechanism as a temporary replacement for the statutory mechanism known as GRIP, Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program. In early 2013, the city adopted a renewed RRM tariff for an additional five years, owner about July 15 to 2013. Atmos Mid-Tex filed with the city an application to increase natural gas rates pursuant to the rate review mechanism tariff renewed by the city in 2013 as a continuation and refinement of the previous RRM rate review process. This is the first annual RRM filing under the renewed RRM tariff. Recommendation of staff is that Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the caption as stated.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Vaughn approves presented, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas approving a negotiated resolution between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and the Atmos Energy Corp Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's 2013 Annual Rate Review Mechanism filing in all cities exercising original jurisdiction, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable, requiring the company to reimburse cities reasonable ratemaking expenses, repealing conflicting resolutions or ordinances determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, providing a most favored nations clause, requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the steering committee's legal counsel, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can you... Tell me in the back, can you hear us out there okay, please? When you were speaking, when the first gentleman was speaking on the chicken ordinance, I noticed up here it was going in and out. I heard about a half of what he was saying. Could y'all hear his entire presentation out there? You could not? So obviously, the system's not working correctly.
Speaker mic at the podium.
Your speaker's not working, mic's not working.
I haven't, I'm pushed to talk, Dean.
Push it before you talk.
Okay. The speaker mic up here was cutting on and off, so that's when I went back the first time to check it. The other issue, I think, is that they have the... If the speaker was... In fact, James, could you get up to this speaker and talk through it?
Well, let's not...
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to.
Go ahead.
Is there... I was speaking with Donna, trying to explain the system. Is there a question about...
I just wanted to see if it's coming through these mics.
It's not working right now.
It is coming through the speakers. We turned it down because we're getting a lot of echo when this speaker is being used and your speakers are on, and some of your mics are too close to your speakers. We're getting a bad echo, so we turned your levels down to avoid the echo.
Okay, well, we'll get this worked out. We'll get this worked out later on.
Turn it back up, and there's nobody at the dais.
But if you're going to have your mic on off, if you will, before you start speaking, push the button so people can hear you when you do speak.
I have mine turned on, pushed to talk. Yours is not.
Can't hear over there, can hear over here.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate it. But what I'm saying to you, Mr. King, is if you're going to have your... Before you have to push it, before you start speaking, push it, because you were speaking while ago, people couldn't hear you.
Mayor, just a quick observation.
Please.
Earlier, I could hear loud and clear the speakers at the podium, but I was here having a hard time hearing anybody speaking into a microphone on the dais through this speaker.
Right, and I think that's the same thing Councilman Durham was having while ago. When I called on him, he didn't even know I'd called on him. All right, well, we'll let staff work on that. They can get people down here and work on that. All right. Item 10 is consideration of a resolution nominating... And I apologize for not being able to hear. If you need to move over to the other side of the room, I greatly... I sincerely apologize. It is your City Hall, and it should work properly for you, and I apologize for that. Consideration of a resolution nominating candidates to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. The Denton Central Appraisal District has requested that the city nominate up to five individuals to serve as the Denton County Appraisal District Board of Directors prior to October 15. After all entities have made their nomination and votes have been cast, the five candidates that receive the most votes become the Board of Directors as of January 1. Board members serve a two-year term. All board members are up for reelection and wish to be reelected, with the exception of Linda Monaco. Denton Central Appraisal District's current Board of Directors include Charles Stafford, John Mahalik, Tom Washington, C.G. McLean, Linda Monaco, and Michelle French, serves as an ex-officio member.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining on this item because I work for the Denton CAD.
Okay, thank you, sir. And so I'll go to Councilman Tierney, please, sir.
Mayor, I have no names at this point.
Councilman Gilmore?
I don't have any either, Mayor.
Councilman Ferguson?
No other names.
Councilman Vaughn?
The same, Mayor, no name.
So you don't wish to nominate anyone?
Mayor, is it an option to... Do these nominees need to be residents of Lewisville? I don't think I actually saw that anywhere.
I think they have to be residents of Denton County, don't they, Julie?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Denton County.
I believe Denton County.
Okay. Is it possible to nominate the current board?
Except for Linda Monaco does not wish to be reelected. The rest of them said they would like to be reelected, so if you want to nominate those that are being reelected or that have wished to be reelected, you could nominate one of them or all of them, or you could nominate any other person that you see fit. Although I would say not Linda Monaco, because she has stipulated she does not wish to be Any nominations?
I'll make the motion that we reelect all of the existing members with the exception of Linda Monaco.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Ferguson.
Motion would be to renominate, correct?
Yes. Renominate the existing board members with the exception of Linda Monaco. I'm sorry, I need to repeat this, because I know you're not hearing it right. We have a motion to renominate the existing Board of Directors with the exception of Linda Monaco, and is seconded by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of a resolution removing Wells Fargo Bank N.A. as trustee and appointing Wilmington Trust N.A. as successors trustee for all city of Lewisville, Texas combination contract revenue and special assessment bonds and refunding bonds issued for the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement Districts, providing a repealer, providing a severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency. The council... The city staff's recommendation is the city is currently using two institutions for trust services with regard to bond issuances of the Castle Hills Public Improvement District. It is desirable that all bonds of the districts be serviced by the same trustee to provide more efficient and effective administration of the bonds in addition to cost savings. Recommendation is that City Council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's nothing else, I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as written, seconded by Councilman Gilmore. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of appointment of members to... Of the four 2020... I'd like to change this to where this is consideration of appointment of two members of the 2025 committee, because we are not appointing to the subcommittees, correct?
Correct.
However, it's written here, members of the four 2025 subcommittees, and we're not doing that. We're just pointing them to the committee, and then they will be appointed to the different subcommittees. Is that correct?
You're essentially approving the process by which they are being appointed to the subcommittees, the randomized process. You're doing both, essentially.
So we are appointing them to the subcommittees?
Through the randomized process.
Okay.
Through the what process?
Through random appointment.
Oh.
In other words, you're approving randomized appointment as opposed to being appointed to any specific subcommittee.
At the September 16, 2013 meeting, City Council appointed all applicants that had submitted applications forms for the 2025 Vision Plan Committee. Following these appointments, staff received additional applications from interested individuals. As the initial kickoff meeting for this committee has not yet been held, which is scheduled for October 15, 2013, staff recommends that the City Council appoint the additional applicants randomly to the four subcommittees, diversity, growth, resource management, and connectivity. Applicants will be cut off after these appointments. Recommendation is that the city... Staff recommendation is that City Council appoint the additional interested individuals to the four 2025 subcommittees. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I move that we approve Lindsey Holliday, Raymond Hernandez, Robert Solite, the seven that we have here. Bill Schull, James Collier, Alberto Castilla, and Michael Pope, and anyone that I slaughtered there, please forgive me. But move to approve those seven to the random process by city staff.
Second. Could y'all hear his motion? I couldn't hear it, but as long as... Julie, you got the motion? Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore. I think it was to approve those that had... Those people that had submitted the application since the last approval.
I just listed their names.
Okay, I couldn't hear that part. Thank you, sir.
I mumbled, it's okay.
I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of naming the Public Safety Training Center as the last part of the 2003 Public Safety Bond Package. A 5,000-square-foot classroom addition is being added to the existing police fire range. The classrooms are shared between the police and fire departments and will also serve as an alternate emergencies, as an alternate emergency operations center. Recommendation is from staff is that council consider naming the Public Training Safety Center. Councilman Ferguson.
Yes, sir. I move that we name the Public Safety Training Center the Jerry R. Galler Public Safety Training Center.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson.
Second.
A second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to reports. Nika. Bob. Chief, how you doing tonight, sir? We appreciate you being here, and I know you'll pass our thoughts and prayers along. Thank you, sir. Do you have anything tonight for us? Gosh, boy, it's a surprise looking for. Chief? Nothing, Karen? Karen, we got some good rain, supposed to get some more this Saturday.
That's correct. A little bit helps, but we're still about almost nine feet down.
Nine feet. Whoa.
It's the lowest it's been in a while.
Is that right?
What's that in percentage?
What?
Percentage.
Oh, gosh. It's not, the percentage-wise won't be that much, but we're probably 13, 15% down.
Okay.
She said it was nine feet down, which is the lowest we've been in a long time. I don't think it's lowest, it's in several years. Right. Donna?
There are various activities going on at the MCL Grand, as usual. A few of those include the Ballet de Dracula, presented by Lake City's Ballet. Those performances are held October 11 through the 12. The acting studio will be presenting Cats the Musical, October 24 through the 26. And Tech Dot will be holding a public information meeting on the I-35 construction, October 28 at 6:00 P.M.
Brendan? Mr. Farrett? Councilman Durham?
Assistant City Manager Baron, did you, do you have the deal about the Lewisville High School Homecoming Parade? Any details on that?
Eric knows more than I do.
Couple items. The, the LHS Homecoming Parade will be held on Thursday, October 17. The parade will start at 6 o'clock. Their route will be from Cowan going east on Main Street, down through the canyon. They'll take a left on Mill, and they'll come back up Church going westbound. They'll disperse the parade west of Charles, and immediately after the parade, everyone will come back to the steps of City Hall, where there'll be a pep rally until dark 30. This is the night before. The Battle of the Axe Game will be at the Goldsmith Stadium between Lewisville and Marcus, so a couple of big nights for LHS and Marcus.
17. Okay. Thank you. Let's all have, mayor.
Councilman Tierney.
Mayor, I know the last item on the agenda was kind of supposed to be hush-hush, so I don't know if you were gonna mention anything. Anybody that's in this audience that may come into contact with Assistant Chief Galler, we're trying to keep this, make this a surprise the best that we can.
Cut his cable and everything else.
Turn off his cable and his internet.
I bet you he's not gonna go home and watch city council meetings late at night.
Be safe on that.
Thank you, mayor.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I'd just like to put a plug in for Keep Lewisville Beautiful. On Saturday, October 26, 8 to 11 a.m., they are having a Make a Difference Day wildflower planting, so whenever you see wildflowers around Lewisville, especially in the street medians, those bulbs are typically done by KLB every year. So if you get a chance, go to their website, Keep Lewisville Beautiful, just Google it, and you can help out on the 26th from 8 to 11.
Thank you, sir. Mr. King? Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. You may have noticed, I asked Assistant City Manager Baron to do the MCL Grand announcements, because I don't have a lot of voice tonight, but I did want to mention that I had the great pleasure of being at the hospital when the doctor came in and told Chief Tittle that he could go home. He'll be doing outpatient chemo. He looks good. He's got a good appetite. His color's good. He feels good. He's very talkative. And it was a pretty, pretty exciting moment. I think I left and he started packing, and was probably gone by 30 minutes after that, so. That was Saturday afternoon. So just keep wishing him the best.
Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, mayor.
Counselor? Julie?
Officer, once again, we appreciate your service that you do every day. We thank you for being here for us tonight, sir.
Certainly want to thank everyone that came out to our Western Week celebration. We had a great success Friday night. I understand we had the largest crowd we'd ever had in attendance. And then Saturday night, probably would've done the same, because it had a little bit of rain, but it dried up, cleared up, and we ended up having a good crowd again Saturday night, so we want to thank all the sponsors and all the citizens that came out and supported that event this year. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pitting Litigation, City of Lewisville versus City of Farmers Branch in Camelot Landfield, Texas LP, Cause Number 4, Colon, 12, Dash, CV, Dash, 00782, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, Application to Obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment, Permit Number 1312B, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Legal Issues Related to Open Meetings, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.074, City Manager Performance, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will now convene into closed session. I'm sorry? That's all I've got.
There's, there's an addendum.
We got the addendum.
I'm sorry?
Addendum that you asked for.
Oh. It's not on my deal. And Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Legal Issues Related to Master Development Agreement and Letter Agreement with Winn Jackson Incorporated.